Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. All those in uniform, please salute. All others, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard, post your colors. Post. Color guard salute. Two. The audience may be seated. Color guard dismissed.
Thank you very, very much.[91.11][91.11](applause). The city clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Irwin? I mean, Mayor Glancy? Sorry.
Fine, all right. Here.
Thank you.
There are no requests for continuance or any public hearing of our agenda item. And now we begin special presentations. You know, the City of Thousand Oaks is proud of its efforts to provide residents with quality leisure and recreational activities. In this community, bicycling is certainly one of those activities. Biking is popular because it's, um, it improves your strength, improves your fitness, and it's just plain fun. My own personal experiences with bicycles probably ended about forty-five years ago. However, not too long ago, Councilmember Irwin got me involved with this Ride for Life thing that, a real eye-opener. It's a great event, though, and cycling still is fun after all those years. Tonight, we're proud to inform residents of a recent award acknowledging our city's outstanding efforts in creating a bicycle-friendly community. I invite Kathy Lowry from the Public Works to step to the podium and tell us about this. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and members of the City Council. My name is Kathy Lowry. I'm the Bicycle Coordinator for the City, and it's with great pleasure I get to come before you tonight. The League of American Bicyclists has designated the City of Thousand Oaks as a bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level. You will have the opportunity tonight to view an awards ceremony via video sent by the League of American Bicyclists. After the presentation, J.C. Simmons, who's the president of our local Caneo Valley Cyclists, would also like to say a few words. The actual award for being a bicycle-friendly community comes in the form of a sign that looks like this. So we have two of these signs that are going to be on display here at City Hall and also at the Community Transportation Center. And now, without further ado, TO TV, will you please start the video?
Mayor Glancy, members of the City Council, my name is Andy Clark, and I'm the president of the League of American Bicyclists, and we're based in Washington, DC. And it's my great pleasure to be with you this evening. I wish I could be with you in person, but sometimes that's not possible, and we appreciate the opportunity to deliver this message in a more green and sustainable manner on the advice of your city staff as we give you the recognition for being a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community. Now, a quick bit of background, if I may. The League of American Bicyclists is a hundred-and-twenty-nine-year-old national membership organization of cyclists, and in recent years, we have focused on a program called the Bicycle Friendly Communities Program that recognizes and rewards communities for improving conditions for cyclists and encouraging people to use their bikes for recreation, for transportation, and to enjoy their daily lives. And we give this designation at a variety of different levels, bronze through platinum. And in the past few years, we have received over two-hundred-and-fifty applications from communities around the country seeking the designation. In that time, we've given designations to only ninety-six of those that have applied. So you should be congratulated for your progress and for the creation of a bicycle-friendly community in Thousand Oaks. We particularly enjoyed seeing the fact that you have a relatively good mode share with two percent of trips being made by bicycle. You've got a great network of more than forty miles of bike lane, some tremendous off-road opportunities with a hundred-and-forty-plus miles of single track available and open within the immediate area. So we know there's great cycling that we had, and you have the great fortune to have a terrific climate year round for cycling. So congratulations on the progress you've made and on reaching the bronze designation. We do know, however, that the potential is there to do even more and to really put Thousand Oaks up there with the great communities for cycling, and we know that because of the presence of great companies like Giant and Amgen who do so much for cycling in the world, let alone in their own backyard, we know because of the great work of clubs like the Caneo Valley Cyclists, the Amgen Bike Club, and many other great organizations and individuals, that the potential is there to really make Thousand Oaks not just a bronze, but as the years go by, a silver, gold, and ultimately a platinum-level bicycle-friendly community. We know you're working on that this year with the Caneo Valley Bike Path and with other terrific projects and some education and outreach programs that will make a huge difference, and we look forward to seeing in the future as you develop and grow as a community. We look forward to a policy that makes sure every street is a complete street, that accommodates cyclists and welcomes cyclists to the community. We look forward to the growth in the bike network and the education and encouragement programs that get people onto their bikes. Things like Bike to Work Day, which is already well-established in the community, but there's definitely potential to grow, particularly as you engage companies like Amgen and Giant in those efforts. I do want to make a particular shout-out to the Caneo Valley Cyclists, who this year we have just announced our Region Six, our Western Region Club of the Year for the amazing work they do in providing riding opportunities and the commitment they have to improving conditions for cyclists in the community. So congratulations to J.C. Simmons and the crew at the Caneo Valley Cyclists for their amazing work, and we truly look forward to both in person and through the applications as we read about your progress. We truly look forward to seeing Thousand Oaks grow and develop as and become an even more bicycle-friendly community in the years ahead. So with that, I will sign off. Thank you again for your work to date on this program. Thank you for being part of the program, and good luck in getting from bronze to the next level in I'm sure what will be a very short space of time, and I hope to see you all soon in person if I possibly can.[542.79][542.79](applause).
City Council and City, that caught me a little by surprise. I didn't realize that my cycle club had been awarded District Six, which is all the Western United States, as Cycle Club of the Year. That came as a surprise. I'm President of the Caneo Valley Cycle Club. I'm also one of the original contributing contributors to the Bicycle Master Plan, the current Bicycle Master Plan. I'm also a longtime active member of the Bicycle Advisory Team. And on behalf of the hundred-and-fifty members of the Caneo Valley Cycle Club, all cyclists, and the community that rides bicycles, I want to thank the City Council and the city for supporting our ongoing efforts to make Thousand Oaks a bicycle-friendly community. Yes, TO is recognized as bronze, but all that says is it's time to increase our efforts in through education to both the cyclists and the motors how to use our, this beautiful infrastructure that we've built. Also, continue to implement the Bicycle Master Plans, the special attention on all the interconnections, particularly across and under the freeways. These are bottlenecks for everybody that rides. Tremendous chance of potential for hazards there. I know I sort of hang on every time I cross existing bike lanes, facilities. So all I'm saying is it's time to redouble our efforts, make TO even a more bicycle-friendly community. Let's get that silver. Santa Barbara has been acknowledged as silver. We need silver. Thank you, City. Thank you, City Council.[655.54][655.54](applause). J.C. and Kathy, thank you very much for all your efforts with our bicycling. We certainly appreciate it. And step forward, let's get a photo. Thank you very much. Okay, for our second presentation, I invite Janet Levitt to join me at the podium. As she's coming down, Janet's the current president/CEO of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Chamber of Commerce and has been for ten years. Before that, she worked with the Westlake Village Chamber. She's an accredited Chamber Executive. She's done an awful lot in our community in at least the last twenty years and has furthered the cause of business in the community. So we thank you very much for all of your, all your efforts and all your accomplishments, and we wish you well after this. So I do have a commendation, and I will invite you to speak. In fact, go ahead and talk. Then I'll read.
Thank you very much. It's been a wonderful career. I don't think anybody could ask to represent two cities, like Thousand Oaks and Westlake Village. Wherever I would go, people would always say, "Wow, you're so lucky to be the Chamber Exec for two great cities." And they meant it, and it's really been in my heart. And we're not moving, so there will be sightings. We do plan to do some traveling and some remodeling, and we also are going to be grandparents this year, first time, so we're pretty excited about that. We are a little concerned, our daughter signed us up for grandparents' training at Los Robles Hospital, so we think we're going to pass, but I have to thank the council and the city staff. You have all been wonderful throughout the years, and keep up what you're doing, and thank you again for the many, many memories, and you're so great, and I can't think of a better city to retire in than Thousand Oaks. So thank you very much.[801.51][801.51](applause).
Is that better? Now, I'd like to read the commendation because it has an awful lot in here, while my memory is usually unbelievably good. This is too much. Commendation in honor of Janet Levitt, whereas Janet Levitt has served as Chamber President and Chief Executive Officer for twenty years. Her first ten years were the Westlake Village Chamber of Commerce, and the next ten years were Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Janet is an accredited Chamber Executive and graduate of the United States Chamber of Commerce Institute for Organized Management from University of California, Los Angeles, she is widely recognized as one of the finest Chamber Executives in California. And whereas Janet's dynamic leadership skills led the Thousand Oaks and Westlake Village Chambers to a successful merger in nineteen-ninety-nine, this combined chamber received the elite four-star accreditation rating from the United States Chamber of Commerce, a level unsurpassed by any other chamber in California. And whereas during Janet's tenure, the chamber emerged as the voice for local business, offering members networking, educational, and leadership growth opportunities in order to foster economic vitality of chamber members. And whereas Janet was instrumental in developing the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Community Foundation, and has also been involved with Rotary, Women's Club, American Heart Association, Boys and Girls Club, and the American Cancer Society. And whereas Janet Levitt has provided exemplary service to the citizens of Thousand Oaks, now therefore I, Thomas P. Glancy, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Janet Levitt and express our appreciation for her outstanding dedication and offer best wishes on her future endeavors.
Thank you.[918.43][918.43](applause).
And along with that is a city tile.
Wow!
Yeah. Is that okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Would you please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Four people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. The first speaker will be Bill Bertram, followed by Chuck Alaback, followed by Steve Mealy. And I would ask the subsequent speakers also to post themselves down here close to the mic in one of the reserved seats.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Bill Bertram. I live in Thousand Oaks, California. I'm here tonight again representing Thousand Oaks Soaring Society, a model glider flying club here in Thousand Oaks. At the last council meeting, I asked about exploring the possibilities of using a portion of the land owned by Thousand Oaks at the corner of Santa Rosa Road and Hill Canyon Road. At that meeting, it was discussed by the council that City Manager Scott Mittnick would look into the request. I've tried to contact Mr. Mittnick since that time with no avail. I did read an article in The Acorn, a local Thousand Oaks newspaper, that because the issue was brought to the City Council as a public speaker, he could not speak legally about the matter because it was not on the agenda. Mr. Mittnick also said in the article that the property was part of the water treatment plant and was zoned for agriculture. Scott was also quoted as saying that they were in the wastewater business there and not in recreational business. And that's why I'm here again tonight to see if anything can be done to change that, whether you can tell me how I get on the agenda, okay, or to speak and show our wares and tell you what we're really about. I can't do that in three minutes, okay? We as a club would still like to sit down with the city manager or whoever and talk about this face-to-face, okay? Or get our request on the agenda at a future meeting. I will end my talk. Actually, I have two things to say now. One is, since this all took place, I got letters today addressing last week's or two-week ago's speak, okay? And the last thing I'll say is, in your words, extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose and product. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Chuck Alaback, followed by Steve Mealy, followed by Derek Bennett.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to give us a chance to voice our feelings. I'm a member of TOS, which is the Thousand Oaks Soaring Society. We fly model airplanes that are quiet. There are no motors, there's no noise, there's no gas, there's no exhaust. There is nothing but the beautiful air above us, and that's what we enjoy. I come from New York. I have spent, I've been here for the past six years, live in Camarillo. The reason I'm here instead of Florida is that for many years, a friend and I have flown out here to California to fly off the beautiful coasts and look over the Pacific Ocean. That gave us for one time a year just wonderful joy and great pleasure. We've found all of the cities, from San Diego to San Francisco, amazingly cooperative for the venture and activities of all of their people that live in their area, and that was the most exciting thing that I've learned, and that's why I'm here in California. We have been flying in a high school with not too very much land into a very, very crowded community, even though as an association members of the American, the Academy of Model Aeronautics, we all carry about $2 million worth of insurance. So in case something goes wrong with our airplanes, hurts somebody, hurts a car, hurts ground or something, we have the coverage for it. So that's each member. The thing that we need most is an area of land that we can fly that does not venture into other people's personal property. The amount of land that we physically use is very, very small. We use a lot of airspace. The farmland that we're looking at at the moment, I call it farmland because that's what it's applied for, but I don't see any farmers there, and it hasn't been for a good many years. That land has not been rented out. So at the moment, even if the farmers were there, we could fly in a small site that requires maybe a thousand feet of length and then the air above it, and then we can fly in there. We can enjoy it and have great pleasure. We're financially contributing to the community. These model airplanes cost anywheres from $450 to $3,000. The average expenditure for this hobby, I would venture, is spent more money than a general golfer would spend. Maintenance of these airplanes are critical. The equipment inside of it is expensive, so there is a fair amount of money that's spent within the community. We are mostly viable members of the community. We contribute and financially stable. So, or appreciate it. The council members and Mr. Mayor, you can look into this area. Allow us to use the airspace which nobody else is using except the wonderful birds and the eagles, which we love to soar with, and we fly with the thought of beauty and air and-
Pardon, Mr. Alaback. You need to wrap it up?
Thank you, yes. We fly with the thought of these airplanes, with the hawks and birds, and enjoy that wonderful silent flight. Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming down. I have a question for you, Mr. Alaback.
Yes.
When the crew get together, typically on a Saturday or Sunday, is it typically on weekend days?
Is it what?
Is it typically on weekend days that you-
Yes.
-get together and-
Sometimes, you know, if the field is available, we would love to fly there during the week.
Well, my question really is, when the crowd gets together, how many vehicles are involved?
Fifteen to twenty.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your being here. Mr. Mealy, followed by Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. My name is Steve Mealy. I live in nineteen fifteen for Neil Place, Thousand Oaks. I've been a member of TOS for two or three years now, and you couldn't find a better bunch of people to associate with. They're very helpful as far as their educational acumen. We have some world-class flyers that really take people under their wing and bring them up to speed, and I'm one of them. There's two real things I'd like to say about, to address tonight. One is, you have a lot of young kids here that are really looking for challenges and endeavors to, you know, get involved with. Flying is one of those challenges that includes all kinds of skills from educational, you know, how does a plane fly, to eye-hand coordination, to cooperation, and as a club, we provide a lot of that mentoring. The other thing, which I think is a great segue after the bicycle segment, the Caneo Valley really provides a lot of people with a lot of recreational opportunities, and we have dog parks and golfing and soccer and baseball, but we really don't have a really good place for us to do our recreation, flying. And what I'd like to bring up is, there's contests that our guys go to. We go to contests in Sacramento and Visalia, out in Phoenix, and that's just the west coast and ones I know of. These contests can bring in some revenue to the municipality because people are drawn to it from a lot of other places. So I would like to think that in the near future, with your help, we could possibly consider something like that where it could be the, they call it the triad, so it's, you know, like I said, Visalia, Sacramento, Phoenix, and we could make that a quadrat or something, and City of Thousand Oaks could be part of that. You could bring in all these really great flyers and really have a good thing to say about the city. I know there's some thing I've read in the paper about where we're trying to promote the city, and there's a lot of controversy about spending the monies on that, but this is certainly one really positive thing that we could promote the city for. So I would really like to see the city take this under their wing and try and help us out and find a place to fly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Bennett.
We have young guys, too. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers, my name is Derek Bennett, and I reside on Equestrian Avenue in the City of Thousand Oaks. I have been a resident of Thousand Oaks since nineteen-seventy, and for the past ten years, I've also been a member of the Thousand Oaks Soaring Society. Most of the issues I wanted to cover have already been covered by Steve and Chuck, so I'm going to make this pretty brief. I'm here today with our members to request that you support us in any way you can in locating a suitable field, and ideally not too far out within the city limits if possible. We believe the site suggested by us located on Hill Canyon in the Santa Rosa Valley is such a location, but may require rezoning to make it available for our activities. I'd also like to add that there are many engineers and physicists within our group because it's that type of sport that encourages that type of person, and in turn, we tend to attract math and science students from the local schools to our activities. So we would like to grow TOS, make it better, bigger, and attract more attention to the young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate all of your participation tonight. Mr. Mittnick, do you have any comments?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff has been working with some of these individuals since the last council meeting, and there were some emails that were sent to us yesterday, and there were responses provided this morning, and those have been shared with the council. And the first gentleman actually came into City Hall today, and we talked with him face-to-face and provided him a copy of that. What we're trying to do here is work cooperatively with this group, as well as the other flying groups that have the same interests, to help to find the most suitable location for this type of activity. And we put Linda Papastas, our Assistant City Manager, in charge of this effort. We've also communicated with the superintendent of schools, Mario Contini, the county CEO, Marty Robinson, and Jim Friedel, the Caneo Rec and Park District General Manager, to make them aware of this. So we're going to do a multi-agency review to find the most suitable property and/or facilities for this use. So we'll continue to work cooperatively, and we'll provide updates to council as we go through this effort. Thank you.
And thank you. And thank you. Consent calendar. Councilwoman Irwin.
I'd like to pull seven i.
Any additional? Going, going, gone? Ms. Irwin?
Do you want me to move the rest of the consent calendar?
That'd be fine.
Okay, I'll move the rest of this consent calendar.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Ms. Hong, can you please elaborate on the ERAF payment?
I will, I will elaborate a little. The item before you is just a payment to the state for ERAF shift, which is a takeaway from our redevelopment agency. As part of the budget that was enacted by the state in '08-'09, which is the current fiscal year, they projected or requested to take away, or I should say took away, $350 million from redevelopment agencies. This represents the city's share of that $350 million, which is about 7% of our revenue for the RDA, and it's $1.25 million. So this payment will be made in May. It's currently subject to litigation by the CRA, which is the California Redevelopment Association, who is suing the state, and we will make payment in May as required, but working with the city attorney's office and CRA to make sure that when we make that payment, that it's appropriate at that time. So this gives the authorization for us to budget it and to prepare for that payment.
Well, grudgingly, I suppose, and I really do hope Sacramento gets their act together and passes a budget and stops stealing our money, I will move seven i.
Please vote. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. There are no public hearings tonight, so we'll begin with department reports. Ms. Hong, you have nine a, ten-year financial strategic plan update.
Yes, Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. The process of producing a financial strategic plan is working as envisioned and has been very helpful in our planning for the future economic health of the city and for the next two-year budget. As you can see from the agenda, tonight we are going to cover the overview and background of the plan, the financial strategic plan's format, and a major fund analysis, that'll be covered by John. Then I'm going to cover the gap closing strategies, and we'll finish up with the pending budget schedule and recommendations. I want to use a picture of the budget lifecycle. The financial strategic plan is just one part of the entire budget process. This model is used as a tool to assist staff in the budget development stage of the city's operating budget. And on tonight's agenda that you just approved on the consent calendar, there were several items that showed that we are in this monitoring and feedback process also, which is on this graph. We had the financial reports for 2008 that you just saw in the last few months, and we have had impacts from development, impact fees, that was on your review tonight, and then also the ERAF shift which you just approved. We, of course, continue to monitor the state budget process and the challenges that brings. The ERAF shift is just one. The Proposition 42 money for streets and roads, those payments have been suspended, and we hear constantly more discussions about suspending more payments to the city. So that is constantly on our radar screen and being monitored. Tonight we will discuss the history of the plan, the objectives of the plan, the calendar of the presentations made to the city council, and the challenges staff came up against in completing the financial strategic plan during these very difficult times. As a reminder, the original 2005 strategic plan was developed using 2003 data, and that original plan was developed by the Davis Company with our assistance, and mainly it addressed the general fund. That financial strategic plan provided a roadmap for future financial decisions and budget development. It made city council and staff aware of the upcoming financial difficulties we're going to be facing. The council listened and suspended new programs and services, which in hindsight has put the city in better financial shape compared to other neighboring cities. In June of 2007, city council requested staff update the 2005 strategic plan prepared by the Davis Company, and during that presentation, which was the adoption of the operating and CIP budget, city council asked staff to come back and update the plan and requested that there would be presentations on the economy and demographics related to the city. So the original objectives set forth by city council for the financial plan were to provide council with economic and demographic information, which we've done, assist the city with ongoing dilemma of how to fund rising costs with slow-growing and declining revenues, which we're working on, review the major funds and their potential impact on the general fund, which is what we're going to talk about tonight, and then finally to link the city council goals and priorities to the new long-term financial plan. And that's one of our recommendations, that this come back to council in the council goal-setting session at the end of February, and we have some discussion about priorities and gap closing strategies. Following just for information are the presentations that have been made to during the last eighteen months. I want to discuss a little bit about the overall challenges that we had preparing the financial strategic plan. We were facing declining revenues projected for this fiscal year, and instead of completing the plan, we came back with gap closing strategies early in July. The plan would have been completed earlier if not due to difficulties due to change in environment such as our local and state economy. And as you recall, we've had, you see, Santa Barbara economists come in and talk to us, and back at that time, they didn't declare it a recession, they were still saying that we needed to have more data. So the economy has changed considerably in the last year. So forecasting ongoing financial and economic changes have added complexity to the project, and it requires staff to go back and review our data as of December of 2008 and looking at our June 2008 numbers. So in the past, our model assumptions have been relatively easy because revenue's always been increasing, and we just looked at regression analysis or the historical increases in revenues, and it made it rather, at least, more, not easier, but at least more predictable. This is a different environment now. So ongoing gap closing strategies for the coming year will be the most important thing that we'll be dealing with going forward. We have to have strategies strategize with the council and have the council give us guidance as a policymaking body on how we should proceed. So I want to talk a little bit about the contents of the financial strategic plan document. There will be an executive summary. It's somewhat what you're hearing from us tonight, we're going to summarize a lot of the findings that we've had in this document. We'll be bringing the document back to you in another month or so. You've seen the economic and demographic outlook. We're going to do a summary tonight of the general fund and other major funds, and we're going to go over gap closing strategies. But the document has also done analysis of our debt and investment policies and infrastructure and facilities, and we also outline all of our fiscal policies in this product as well. So with that, I'll hand the presentation over to John Adams.
Good evening, council. I will be going over mostly the fund analysis that we performed. I'm going to say that we reviewed all funds. I'm going to focus on the major funds which we have listed up on the screen, including the general fund, library, stormwater, water, wastewater, solid waste, transportation and golf course, and of course, the theater fund. 2009 projections, first of all, I want to say this, the information we're providing tonight is based on our financial model. It assumes, we have certain assumptions, and we are trying to use the most current data. When I talk about the most current data, we did present tonight the financial reports for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2008, which was last June. In some cases, specifically the general fund, we are using data as of December 31st. What has been very challenging has been that it has been very dynamic over the last twelve months, and part of the push on our part was to use the most current data through December 31st, which has added a level of complexity, and that's why in some cases we haven't completed the plan. Just briefly, each fund has very limited revenue sources, so we did all analysis on all revenue line items. On the expenditure side, we do go by categories, and a category could be salaries, could be benefits, could be certain operating costs like travel and training. So we use certain assumptions in the major categories. We don't go line item by line item, but we do look at category level. We are including transfers in, transfers out, and those really come up when we look at gaps within certain funds. The library fund is a perfect example where, at the end of the day, whatever is not received in revenue has to be made up by the general fund. And then finally, based on our capital improvement program, and as you know, with our CIP budget, we do do a five-year program, two years is budgeted, and the other three years is projected. And so we use that five-year model plus added the additional five years on the tail end. Quickly, general fund, same thing, line item. There's approximately 150 different revenue sources within the general fund, and they focus on the major revenue sources. We did look at the transfers out and their impacts on the general fund, and then of course, we looked at each division and department. Let me spend some time talking about general fund revenues, and specifically the ones that we've had some challenges with. Sales tax, as you have heard, the economy is not doing as well as we had hoped. Sales taxes is a major revenue. It is approximately 37% of the general fund revenue, and so we really rely on sales tax. The other one is development-related revenue. I will show some graphs on development-related revenues, specifically building permits and plan check revenues. Other major revenues, which I won't necessarily show you graphs on, but I wanted to highlight, property tax. After analyzing county data through December 31st of 2008, staff is comfortable projecting a 2.5% increase in '09, 2010. This is because we did see significant appeals for last year, and those appeals were based on sales that occurred between 2004 and 2007. And so the benefit that Thousand Oaks has is we hadn't seen growth within our housing stock and our residential properties within those years. And so our average assessed value is lower than what the median home sale price is. So I think we've seen most of the appeals occur. We will see some, but we still are projecting 2.5% increases, and 2% as you know is the increase per Prop 13. One of the other ones that is not mentioned here, but I want to briefly mention it, is motor vehicle license fees. Back during the budget struggles of 2005 and Prop 1A, the state reduced the VLF, as you know, 67%, and reduced the fees that were paid for vehicle licensing fees. They backfilled it with property tax, and currently, that money that is given to us by the state is not growing based on vehicles and the assessed valuation on vehicles, but it's growing based on the assessed valuation of properties. And so we are projecting the same, a 2.5% increase on vehicle license fees. With vehicle license fees, there's also another component that's paid by the state. We have anticipated no, we actually, that was a $600,000 revenue source we were seeing this year or budgeted. We are projecting that only at 250, and so that is also incorporated in the model. Transit occupancy tax, I will show you a graph on transient occupancy tax. This is really our best revenue to gauge the local economy. We get sales, or we get receipts from November, we receive receipts December 31st based on November occupancy, and through the first five months of '08-'09 is actually the same as it was in 2007. So from July through November of 2008, it's almost identical to what we saw in July of 2007 through November of 2007, so those five-month periods. So we're not anticipating any reductions in TOT, which we have seen in sales tax and other development-related revenue. We thought this graph would be, staff thought this would be beneficial since it shows other points in which statewide sales tax has had negative growth. We see back in the 90s with the aerospace, and you saw statewide sales tax decrease. You also saw the tech bubble, which statewide sales tax had significant growth and went down to zero, and then now the credit bubble where we see negative sales tax statewide. The reason why this is important is because when you see Thousand Oaks sales tax growth or declines in our sales tax, it does not mirror this. And so it's sort of a point that Thousand Oaks in some cases is isolated or insulated from other communities, if it's other communities that rely heavily on aerospace or San Jose as far as the tech companies. This is our actual sales tax trend for the past nine years. What I want to highlight is two points on this. 2005, you see a decline, and that decline was at the point which the budget, the state took away money as part of the triple flip with the payback years out. So we saw a somewhat of a decline from 2004-2005. If we took out that and based it on total cash receipts, based on cash, we wouldn't have seen that same decline. But if you look at 2006-2007, 2007 was the highest year Thousand Oaks has seen at $28.8 million. You see the 2008, which ended at $26.8 million, and what we are projecting at this point is $25 million. That's two consecutive years of decreases in sales tax at approximately 7% per year. For sales tax, this actually shows some of the history, but more importantly, it shows the five years that we're projecting through fiscal year 2013. As noted, you see 2009 at $25 million, and that's based on projected revenue at this point based on December data, or based on actually the third quarter of 2008, but based on the most recent data we have. We anticipate, actually, we're holding sales tax for 2010 flat. There could be some reduction, but we're waiting to see the fourth quarter of 2008 before we make that assumption. Everyone is hoping that the recession or the economy will turn around in two years. You're seeing out in 2011, 2012, 2013, we are seeing 2% increases over the next, over the final three years of the five-year plan. Next, thank you. This graph actually shows building permits at the national levels. We showed state sales tax at the state level. We thought this would be beneficial to see building permits at the national level. The state is provided by the U.S. Census and the National Association of Home Builders. Certainly, you can see where the credit bubble started and projected in '06, and the declines in building permits at the national level. So this is per month. In January of '06, approximately 2.3 million permits going all the way out through the most current quarter, which was December. This reflects building permits processed for the City of Thousand Oaks through its community development department. You can certainly see a spike in 1999, and then a further spike in 2002. Since 2002, we've seen declines on permits processed. At this point, we're projecting for the current fiscal year ending to stay around the 6,000 level based on looking at permits through December 31st. Building permit revenues, the model, after projecting the 2009 permits, the financial model is not forecasting future declines in the number of permits, but is anticipating some minor increase in fees to cover increases to costs. This revenue and other development-related revenue have seen the biggest declines based on the economy over the last eighteen months. You know, I know that if, just by looking at, you look at 2007, you see a million five, and it's jumping down to just a little over a million. That's a 33% decrease over that period of time, and that's what I mean, it's had the most significant decrease as far as percentage. Same thing, plan check revenues, again, the spike in '99, the bubble over 2001 to 2004, and then the declines. Earlier, I was talking about transient occupancy tax. Earlier, I was talking about transient occupancy tax. We do show minor increases, especially after two years out, in 2011, 2012, and 2013. 2009, 2010 are going to be projected at flat, which is just under $3 million. Let me spend just a couple seconds on General Fund expenditures. I highlighted salaries and benefits and police costs. Salary and benefits represent approximately 42% to 44% of the General Fund budget. Police costs represents approximately 38% to 40%, depending on the year. Salary and benefit costs, again, I'll explain that the increase in 2007 was based on our prepayment of the OPEB liability. So there was an increase that increased almost $4 million. If we hadn't made that, we would have seen a modest increase. But I want you to focus on the year after, which is 2008, which is what we really are considering our base year at this point. We are projecting a decrease for 2009. Remember, 2008, we did have frozen positions from January of 2008. We carried those positions and got approval to reduce the budget in July of 2008. We have... And that included 11 positions. Since July 2008, we actually have 31 vacant positions. And so we anticipate a further reduction in salary and benefits for fiscal year ending 2009, and that's why there's a further decrease. We do see, based on the current staffing levels, increases over the next four years, based on current MOUs and current anticipated cost increases in the various benefit levels. So I wanted to be... In looking at that, 2008 had about six to nine months of vacant positions that established the 11 vacant positions that were completely frozen July 1st. Since then, we're at that 31 positions that are currently frozen. Police costs, this just shows history from 2000 to 2013, or I should say, the actuals from 2000 to 2008, and then 2009's projection, '10, '11, '12, and '13 are projections. 2009, we only... Based on getting information from the county, which only had a 1% increase to cost, we see a very small increase between 2008 and 2009. From 2009 forward, the model is anticipating a 5% increase to police costs. That's been our standard practice when budgeting for police, figuring that the county won't come out with that number until several months after we've adopted a budget. This, in some cases, has helped us. In this current year, we budgeted only 1%, or 5%, but it only was 1%. That's providing a little over $1 million savings that will offset some of the other revenues that have been lower that we're projecting for 2009. So that's actually helped us in this case, and we're going forward with a 5%, figuring that if we project 5% as we have done in the past, the financial model will show us where our gaps are, and then we can try to address them accordingly. I'm going to put this... I'm going to do a summary on the General Fund. What I'm showing you here is the first, 2005 through 2009, where we have revenues that have exceeded expenditures. And in 2009, we anticipate and project expenditures and operating revenues to match. We are projecting at just about $68 million for both. Back in July, that number was a little higher. It was a little over $70 million. Since then, we've had savings in both salaries and benefits because of the vacant positions and in police costs because of the amount of the actual decrease in the increase, I guess, for police costs going from 5% to 1%. So on one side, we've had some decreases, some significant decreases in revenues. On the other side, we have done our best to try to address those challenges either through freezing positions or, in this case, being fortunate that the county only had a 1% increase instead of our 5% increase projected. It's the outer years that we're doing this model to show is in 2010, that gap, as you see, the yellow is expenditures and revenues, is not keeping up with expenditures. In the first year, that gap, as mentioned in the staff report, is $3.2 million, and it grows, figuring we're using the same assumptions and the revenue's not keeping up with the In summary, fiscal year '08, '09 is projected to be balanced, based on the current savings and projected revenue declines. Next year, $3.2 million is what we're starting off with as far as part of the model. Certainly, this will help us identify that we do have a gap, and we need to look at strategies to address those. The model shows a decrease in fund balance. As... If we don't address the gap, as the model shows, the city will use fund balance. As you know, the city has 20%, 15% in working, and 5% in emergency reserve. If we do not take action or there aren't any changes to the model, we would run through that fund balance by fiscal year ending 2016. Library. I'm going to briefly talk about each fund. I'm going to briefly talk about the library. As you might know, property tax is the primary revenue source for the General Fund. Property tax is approximately $5.5 million of a $9 million budget. $500,000 is other revenue sources, and the difference, which is approximately 3.5, is made up from the General Fund. Any dependence on the General Fund, of course, will just further widen that gap on the General Fund and put more reliance on the General Fund and thus impact other city programs and service levels. So one of our gap-closing strategies is just to reduce the growth of the General Fund subsidy or ensure that doesn't grow any more than it currently is. This shows the increase in library expenditures, operating expenditures since 2000. As you can see, it was just above $5 million. Currently, it's just under $9 million. And the smaller chart shows the increase in the operating transfer, and in 2007 and 2008, we've seen increases from prior years. Stormwater fund analysis, talked in depth on the report, but primary funding is from the Ventura County Flood Control. Staff must address the stormwater permit costs and costs associated with Ventura County wide stormwater permit. No costs for the permit are included in the model yet. We just felt it was too premature to try to guess at those costs. But what we thought was important is just to show that the General Fund does provide current subsidy. Any additional cost will further impact the General Fund. Capital projects funds. These are mostly development fees. We had a report on this evening on the consent calendar versus the impact fees. The city last year received approximately $6 million in impact fees. A large portion is for the wastewater treatment plant and some others, but there are street-related projects and traffic-related projects that get development impact fees. Those fees are used to maintain or to improve infrastructure, and so as that money is exhausted, there will be a reliance on the General Fund. Let me cover the water and wastewater fund analysis. I want to highlight that both of them benefit from financial planning that Public Works does with Barrow Wells, which is an outside consultant. Wastewater has been doing the plans for over a decade. This is the second year that they have done this for the water fund. The fund is... As we know, there have been some challenges on the operating costs as far as purchasing water. There have been increases to those fees. We anticipate future increases. One of the challenges will be for the water fund is that net assets will need to be grown in order to maintain that infrastructure. You'll hear about the water infrastructure is getting older, and there is need to improve those systems. And so there's going to be a need to grow net assets in the capital fund to be able to address this issue. Wastewater fund, fairly good shape. Again, prepared... Financial report is prepared by Barrow Wells. Net assets are used to complete and to maintain the infrastructure that's in place. Solid Waste Fund, operating deficit this fiscal year due to partial funding of the MSC expansion. After this fiscal year, the fund will operate with a deficit. We did not see any challenges with the solid waste fund. Transportation fund analysis, fund is balanced, primarily funded by transportation funds. Currently, we use air quality development fees to supplement the fare box. For those that may or may not know, there's a certain amount of money that has to be provided by the fare box, and if not, it has to be subsidized either by the General Fund or other funding sources that are appropriate. Currently, the city uses air quality development fees, but these fees may dry up, and then thus there will be a reliance on the General Fund. I also just want to note, any increase in service delivery would either have to be supported by additional funds, transportation funds, or offsetted by General Fund. Golf course managed. We currently have a management company in there. Fund is balanced. We review fees in the spring of every year. Fees are put in place in July. The fund and the course is self-supporting. I do want to mention that the golf course currently, and is part of the model, is projected to provide between $80,000 and $100,000 in open space. And finally, the theater fund, forecasted this year to have a break even. If it does not, it will be using net assets or reserves. We are working through the financial model, and we are anticipating no fee increases for the next budget cycle. But that will come at a challenge as we try to make up the difference, either by reducing some various costs or looking at what the service delivery is. Again, any subsidy from the General Fund, any support, will actually have impacts, again, on the city programs and services. Overall, most major funds are positive. I think the one that I would highlight would be the theaters fund because of, just like sales tax or development-related fees, they are subject to how the economy is doing. And if that... If shows aren't booked and tickets aren't being sold, that does have an impact on the theaters. Other business-type funds are all positive and are self-supporting. Let me turn it over to Candace to talk about the financial challenges and the gap-closing
I want to draw your attention to Page 26 of the agenda. The attachment A has gap-closing strategies in the agenda document. With input from all departments, there are a number of city-wide gap-closing strategies proposed on the gap-closing page that we've got. Actually, it's four pages in there, from Page 26 to 30. Some are short-term, some are long-term, some are one-time, some are ongoing. Some have been implemented and some are under study, and some may not be palatable to the council or the public as a choice. This is why we will need council prioritization efforts before the two-year budget is completed. The long-term gap-closing strategies, I just wanted to spend a little bit of time on. They're there to ensure the city's fiscal health. We are... One of our long-term strategies is to review a combination of transient occupancy tax, business license rates, and sales tax rates and other revenue sources to bring them in line with our other local agencies. We found from some initial reviews that we are behind what other cities have as their revenues. And one of the things that council did in April of 2008 was suggested that we partner with the Park District and the School District and look at Funding Options Review. That RFP is out on the streets right now, and I understand we've already gotten over 18 companies downloading, so there is an interest in this RFP, and we will be bringing that back to you probably in mid-March. So it will be evaluated by both the Park District and the School District, and that's one of our long-term strategies that we'll be talking about going forward. For example, if we... You know, one of the revenue gaps that we... And we saw the big gap that John presented tonight, and it's clear to me that even with cutting salaries and benefits costs and doing other one-time things that we've done, that long-term, this isn't going to be a good strategy. And we've got to look at long-term and what else we need to do to be able to provide the services that the community's come to expect and deal with some of the concerns as well with the Park District and School District, some of their revenue gaps that they're experiencing, so that we're no longer relying on the state government to... And their vagaries of what's happening up at Sacramento, that we have more local control And we'll be open afterwards to ask... You can ask any questions you want about that, but I'll go ahead and turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Candace. I'm just going to briefly go over a few key dates. For the upcoming FSP, as we said, this is one of the... Second to the final presentation. The dates that are in front of you, again, tonight is the first one. We plan on meeting with the Finance Committee, if approved and recommended by the City Council, to review gap-closing strategies. We will bring that... Those findings back to the City Council at the goal-setting session that's scheduled for the 24th of February. We will have a published draft financial strategic plan that's presented to the city executive team and departments for review and comments. We will bring a final draft plan to the committee the week of the 9th, and then we will publish and distribute the city's financial strategic plan the week of the 24th. A couple key dates. User fees will be coming to the City Council on the 10th. That's part of the process is establish and to review our user fees. On the 24th, we will be looking at the CIP budget. On the 7th, we will be looking at wastewater and water. And we'll have a public hearing to adopt proposed user fees on the 21st. We will have a proposed operating budget study session on the 21st, and then adoption of both the operating and CIP budget on the 9th of June. Just sort of concluding this presentation, fiscal year '08, '09 is... We are projecting it to be balanced for the General Fund. We believe the proactive approach of doing the FSP over this last year has helped us at least look at the revenue challenge and identify expenditure savings and help the council in preparing for that. And then, just to continue to evaluate gap-closing strategies, I think that, based on the way the model is being presented, we anticipate gaps just as we sit today, but we believe that going forward, we'll be able to address those with some strategic planning. So the recommendations for this evening, first, receive the staff report presented to you this evening. Number two, direct the City Council Finance Audit Committee to prioritize gap-closing strategies and review the proposed '09, 2010, and the fiscal year 2010, 2011 operating budget. Number three, direct the City Council Capital Facilities Committee to review and prioritize citywide capital improvement projects included in the proposed fiscal year 2009, 2010, 2010, 2011 capital improvement plan budget. And then finally, schedule the February 24th, 2009 City Council meeting to set priorities and City Council goals and review and prioritize gap-closing strategies. And that concludes our presentation. We're here for any questions.
Thank you both very much for a great report, very thorough and informative. Councilmember Fox?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to get through this. I have a number of questions, though, because that was a pretty extensive report. Just to start with, I'm going to refer to your slides. On the sales tax analysis and the sales tax trends analysis, I'm just curious, why the different values, dollar values? You use increments of $5 million in sales tax, and then it looks like increments of I mean, it's not a big deal. The numbers are still the numbers, but I'm just curious why it's not apples and apples?
Well, as far as using the number, I think when we put in the graph, we were doing a lot more years out, and so we had some... I know this... It's more of a formatting issue. I will say that when we put together our graphs, we actually had 10 years, and so we do have growth where it gets up to $32 million. It's an oversight.
All right. On the general fund salary and benefit costs, if I heard you right and I'm reading the graph right, two thousand and nine, we're looking at right at twenty-five, thirty million, right?
Correct.
On, I'm sorry, page twenty-five, slide twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, and then, in four years, it goes up ten million? Am I reading that right? The thirty-five million?
Goes from thirty to thirty-five million.
Five, yeah, five million.
Yes, and the assumptions are, for salaries, it's three percent and benefits, it's four percent.
Okay, that's assuming that we do that.
There's, yes, there is-
I mean, I don't want to, we just had good negotiations, but in other cities right now, the reality is, is that, you know, cities may not have, may not be in a position to get pay raises.
Correct, and I think that we, as part of the model, we're forecasting three as, because that's part of the MOUs for the next two years, so we're projecting the three and then what we have traditionally done and projecting benefits at four percent. And so you are correct. I mean, at this point, the model is just to say if we maintain those benefits and those salaries at the same, that's the gap. So you are correct.
All right, and I recognize the MOUs and, do we do a two- or three-year deal? Three?
Three and three half.
Okay, that's what I thought. But that, okay, that takes us from, that's oh-eight, oh-nine, ten, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then we have three years-
Actually, it goes through eleven.
Yeah, three years of assumption there and I think just council needs to be aware that that, those are not necessarily real dollars that we're committed to, those are forecasted dollars that, you know, we have control over that. And, but I heard what you're saying, Candace, you're trying to guess, is that even if we do the things that we're supposed to do in terms of salaries, there's still going to be a deficit, for lack of a better description. Okay. And then, on the same page, slide twenty-six, the police costs, they look like they're, for oh-nine, about twenty-four million, just below twenty-five million?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't have the budget in front of me, so I'm just, I don't know what the exact figures are, but then in four years, they're estimated to go up to thirty-one million.
Yes, and that, again, projecting what the county will do is very difficult, but we're using five percent as part of the model. So five percent with no change in service levels, just five percent based on current service levels and current costs as of today.
Does that build in the projected MOU costs that we have no control over? Because the police costs are salary costs.
That's what we're estimating, as we're estimating the police contract will increase by percent that they've given increases to their sheriff's deputies and staff. But that's based on historical members, it's what we've seen in the past. And again, it's a model, we're just an estimate, and of course, it's subject to change.
Yeah, help me with this. That is seven million dollars in four years.
Correct.
That's not, that's not five percent of twenty-four?
No, it goes up to thirty-one, thirty-one point-
Right, but it goes from twenty-four million to thirty-one million, but that's not five percent.
Actually, it's just under five.
If I can-
It's just under twenty-five, it's going to go up to-
Like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to quibble with the numbers. I just point that out for the council in, that's a lot of money, okay, over a very short period of time, and so we just need to take note of that, and I think that, to some degree, enters into discussion that we're having on fire services. So we need to take a look at that. And then, on page, well, slide twenty-seven, and Candace, I think you, we just kind of, this just goes to, in four years, you're predicting, and I know we don't run deficits because we have to balance our budget, but you're predicting about a five-million-dollar deficit if things go the way they're supposed to go?
Two thousand thirteen, it's six million.
Six million, okay. You have that a little above that. So we're two thousand nine, four years, and that's what your strategy, your long and short-term strategies are about, is putting us in a balanced budget in two thousand thirteen?
Correct, along with, you know, doing gap-closing strategies, it might reduce our expenditures or, you know, in addition to dealing with our revenue gap.
Well, before I get too far ahead, you know, what I'd like, and I think would be helpful, I'll just speak for myself, is projections that do not include, if all things stay the same, in terms of revenue and the projections that the best we have, and I recognize that's, we don't know what the state's doing in, you know, the sales tax and some of those other things, but as best we can with your projections, I think we need to see, when you bring this back, where we're at with no salary increases. And again, I want to emphasize, I think we need these as just options to look at, making the assumption that it's a three percent for the next four years, and then on the other hand, we're talking about, you know, you really didn't go into the service issues, you just kind of skimmed across those, and I recognize that was an effort just to briefly go through the report, but we're talking about major service cuts. You know, street cleaning, some serious issues, and, you know, just for why I speak, I mean, we take care of the employees pretty good here in Thousand Oaks and we should. We're a world-class city and our employees work hard, but before we're going to start talking about service cuts, major service cuts, you know, we need to take a look at what we're doing on the labor costs, just from my perspective, and that's really not built into the report unless I missed it.
Well, that's one of the thing though, that's one of our component, component, is that because of our, we're also projecting an increase in the PERS rate too-
Right.
-two years down the road, so we don't have any control over that and that would still be in there, but we'd be happy to bring back to you what it would look like with salaries and benefits staying flat, with salaries staying flat, we can't, we don't have a lot of control over that at this part.
Right, as much. And then, on page, on slide thirty, looking at the Library Fund, in two thousand and five, the general fund transfer end looks about, was that two million or is that two million?
Okay, two million.
Okay, and then, oh-six, about two and a half million, maybe two-point-three million. Oh-seven, it jumps up to three million, and then, oh-eight, it drops back down to two-point-eight million. I don't remember, again, I don't have the budget in front of me, I don't remember adding positions to the library, and so where's this operating general fund coming from? Why are we adding more money and taking money away from the library if we're not adding positions?
Yeah, I mean, operationally, I wish I should look at that.
Here comes Steve. Man, they're talking about the library!
Yeah, well, but part of it too is that we've got the operational costs of being in, you know, new buildings, you've got some of that going on too. You've got increased air conditioning and heating and lighting and all that, but I'll go ahead and let you, we're talking about-
Let me talk about the graph.
We're talking about, Candace, we're talking about a million dollars in two years. That's a lot of air conditioning.
Well, let me, let me talk about the graph really fast. In two thousand and five, we saw a general fund subsidy of two million dollars. In two thousand and eight, which is the most current year to end, it was two-point-eight million.
Right.
You know, again, the expansion, again, like you said, you know, staff increases, there is, of course, just additional operational costs, whether, I'm not going to say it's air conditioning, but materials, you know, there are other costs, so to have a, go from two million to two-point-eight over a four-year period, it's mostly attributed to the expansion.
We also have a discussion-
It's not, not four years, I don't, again, it's two thousand and five-
Right.
To two thousand and seven, that's two years, and it went up a million dollars and we just dropped it two-hundred thousand.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about too, in this last go-around, was that we've had, we've got money in there for doing repair and replacement of some of the furniture in the building too, and that was over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand there.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a capital?
No, that one ended up in the MNO budget.
What's that?
It ended up in the maintenance and operations budget. But Steve, I don't know if you had some other thoughts on?
Well, just the overall, the expansion, we increased the square footage by almost a third of the library, so there are costs associated with that expansion. Everything from HVAC to, we didn't, we didn't add bodies per se, but we did add money in the hourly budget to help us cover those additional, those additional hours. It was, it was a significant undertaking to do that with as little as we did, but we did still, you know, have some increases to the, to the budget.
All right, very good. Again, I'm just, I'm just trying to get some clarification.
No, I understand, it's very critical stuff.
Okay, and then on the slide number thirty-eight, the Theater Fund Analysis, and just a, just a note for the balance of the council, Mr. Gillette and I, that last bullet, "An increase in general fund assistance will directly result in correspond reduction in city programs and services." We need to overlay that with the strategies that are outlined in the staff report relative to some pretty major service cuts, you know, from where I sit. So that's something that, as we deal with this arts review and the recommendations, Mr. Gillette and I are, I think by necessity now, we're going to have to look at what we're dealing with here and, and balance those, those competing interests, because the consultants' report talked about us adding general fund dollars basically to keep the theaters and the arts community solvent and active, and yet now we're talking about even without that allocation of dollars, some significant city service cuts. So I just, I just point that out, that while it just seems a relatively innocuous statement there, it could have some pretty big impacts. And then, looking at the staff report on the short-term strategies, I'm just curious, those, for example, the, the open space and some of the other issues, those are council-implemented programs. I don't recall that, and I'm just asking, I don't recall, maybe they did, were the, those implemented budget strategies, were they brought back to council?
In July of two thousand and eight, when we brought back gap-closing strategies and we had four million dollars to cut, that first one, the open space transfer, was one of the gap-closing strategies.
Okay.
And you voted on that.
All right, so just as a matter of policy, if it's a council-implemented or council-imposed program specific to the budget before staff makes an adjustment, and I'm not suggesting that we don't want you to do that, I'm just curious, do those come back to the council in some form, either through a memo or actually at the meeting?
As an ongoing one, you mean if we did it next fiscal year, is that what you're referring to?
Both.
Yeah, well, that's partly why we're recommending that the facilities, I mean, the Financial and Audit Committee actually go and take a look at all of these and come back to us with what they recommend, and then the council will be reviewing it as well, and it'll be part of the budget document, you know, my proposed document as well. So if there's any of that in there, we'll have guidance from you and additional guidance at the time that you review the operating budget.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, on page twenty-seven of the staff report, item twelve, law enforcement costs, the recommendation is to freeze one detective position for a full year, that's the hit and run officer. I'm assuming that was a recommendation by Chief Parks? Parks, Chief Carpenter? Sorry about that.
It was brought up in passing, I'm not sure that he's totally endorsing it, but it was just a suggestion. I think these are just ideas and whether or not we want to come up with more or if the council can embrace them, but some of these came up from other people besides the police department.
Okay. My question is, was that position recommended by the police chief?
I can-
Not that he's asking for it to be cut. I don't know how many detectives that we employ, but was that position-
That one was something that he mentioned. I'm not sure, but you want to answer if that's a recommendation, Dennis?
Chief, just to make it easy, if you had to lose one detective position, would this be the one you would recommend?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Then finally, on page twenty-nine, I think this is my last question, on the long-term strategies, there's no dollar value attached. So how do we know if we were to, I'm assuming you would bring this back, but I'm just curious, how would you, how would you outline a, for example, item B, market online services to reduce visits to City Hall?
Yeah, that's why it's ongoing, I mean, coming up with the cost of that is rather difficult, so it's something we'd have to do some, we're in progress to do more analysis on.
Okay.
And, you know, we're actually going to be bringing back some other initiatives to you that will have a cost-benefit analysis along with it, so it's all part of the plan to bring you initial, you know, other, other projects that will have the savings as well.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your indulgence there.
Our pleasure.
Ms. Bill de la Peña. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, and I do want to congratulate you on a very thorough report and it is very informative. I'm glad that we're doing this and I remember back in July, I had mentioned that the city should tighten its belt before going out to raise taxes or cut services, and I'm glad that, I shouldn't say I'm glad, but I think we're finally at the point where we have to take somewhat drastic measures. And over the last eighteen months, that hasn't quite happened. We were hopeful that things would improve. Unfortunately, they became worse. So here we are now, and I, being that I had mentioned in the past that we need to tighten our belts, this is certainly something that we need to look at, salaries and benefits. I had, I would even like to suggest for the committee to consider a salary freeze for employees making more than a hundred thousand dollars. And this past year, we, we did give raises even though we shouldn't have to, employees making more than two-hundred thousand dollars. This is something that obviously we need to revisit and reconsider, and I would like for the committee to, to look at that. Since salaries and benefits-
Ms. de la Peña, do you have questions involved?
Pardon me?
Do you have questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Just bear with me one moment. On page twen, on slides twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we're going to twenty-seven, Mr. Adams, you mentioned that there will be a gap of approximately five million dollars in the year two thousand and thirteen. Is that considering if things remain status quo or is it with changes in mind?
I guess I would ask to clarify what status quo is, but for expenditures, that model does project for police costs of five percent with no change in service level, and for salary and benefits, that would, again, project what our current staffing levels are and include the three and four percent either based on salaries or benefits, and then other increases in certain MNOs. So the model, you know, again, we're, I hate to use status quo, but we are using, this is what we're at right now and going forward, and then our real focus is on revenue, and we are doing a lot more analysis in that aspect to be able to project where our revenue is, and that's why the gap is. So the model, and again, it's a model, and it's to show that if we don't take certain actions, whether it's looking at efficiencies or looking to reduce certain programs, we would have a gap in going out in the, over the five years. So no changes.
And using that pattern or that method, we would then have a zero balance in our fund by the year two thousand and sixteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, we have thirty-one positions frozen since last July?
We have thirty-one vacancies at this time.
Those vacancies have not been filled in at least six months?
When we say there's currently thirty-one, that is based on vacancies through last, I think last week or two weeks ago, so we did see several retirements in December and those include those positions, and until, until bringing this back to the council, identifying where our gaps is and strategizing how we go forward over the next six months, they're going, I don't anticipate any, or very few of them to be actually filled.
Maybe to clarify more, it was eleven vacancies that we had frozen at July when we brought that back to you. We've had another twenty in the last six months.
Okay. Very good. And at what point do we consider frozen positions eliminated?
We do that in the budget process, and actually, we've, the only, last time we ever eliminated positions was in ninety-two when we had the economic downturn. Ever since then, we've solely incrementally added employees up till about year two thousand and we've not really added any staffing since then, so we're going down the other direction, and so that's part of the budget process, decide what positions will be- part of the budget process, decide what positions will be frozen or which ones eliminated. And that we brought to you when we do the operating budget in April.
Okay. So, if we were to eliminate thirty-one positions, obviously, that would show an impact certainly on the budget.
Right now, they're vacant. They would, if we were going to eliminate them all, yes, that would reduce the budget. However, I think then you're talking about service delivery, and we've got to be very strategic about which positions we fill and don't fill, and where they are moved to if we have to, move people around. So, it's one of the reasons for the vacancies, that it helps us be more strategic. So, right now, I don't, I really can't answer whether or not we're going to have thirty positions vacant at the time we bring this to council, or we're going to have more. We just have to look at the gap at the time we finally do the presentation to you. And how we're going to do that, if it's going to be partly through payroll, obviously, because that's a good percentage of our budget, but we've also got other areas to be looking at as well.
I have a question for Mr. Rodden, or perhaps also Mrs. Hong. What is the cost of cleaning the beautiful, and it is beautiful aquarium at the new library per year?
The cost for the aquarium is approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars per year.
Have you looked at how to reduce that particular cost?
Well, it's a monthly fee, and they're really doing the basic cleaning and not much more. To reduce it, I think you would have an aquarium that's pretty cloudy and not very attractive to look at, and I'm not sure I'd recommend that.
And we are sure that we have the best available deal with this maintenance contract?
Yes, we have, the original contractor and cleaner was the person who designed and built the aquarium, or the company that built the aquarium. The current one, we switched to, it happens to be the company that cleans the aquarium at Four Seasons, and we like the looks of that aquarium very much, so we contacted them, and they're now the ones who are doing the job.
Thank you. Certainly, we don't want, the library has suffered quite a bit already in terms of overall staff reductions, and certainly, it would be terrible if we saw any more cuts to the library, especially now in these difficult economic times, more people are using the library, correct?
Right, that's correct. Our business, nationwide, libraries sees, library usage increases between ten to fifteen percent per year during times like this. Currently, our usage is up seven percent, but our normal usage is so high that I think seven percent speaks very well to how heavily we are used.
And what do you think of the recommendation to eliminate our representative on the, I forget the name, Cooperative Library Board?
Right, that is a position that's actually mandated by the state as part of the metropolitan cooperative library system that we belong to. It actually takes very little time. They meet two or three times per year. Most of the time is actually spent, as far as city time goes, most of the time is actually spent in the interview process where that person is selected. It's a council committee who interviews. Frankly, I think it's something that comes up every year at the state level as to whether or not that whole body should continue. So, it's something that could certainly be looked at, but the state mandate does come into play.
Thank you. Speaking of committees, Mrs. Hong, there is a recommendation to consolidate some committees, perhaps eliminate others. What if, how much would we be saving in terms of staff cost if we were to consolidate some of the committees or eliminate some of them? Where would that staff time go? What would that be used for, then?
Well, one example I might be able to use is that the traffic commission was meeting regularly, and they recently voted to meet quarterly, I believe. Obviously, you've got secretary of time and all that, that adds up, and when we're down thirty-one positions, obviously, we've got time that we could be using elsewhere since we've got vacancies. And so, in terms of costs, if you're adding up all the hours that somebody spends on it, we could certainly do that for you, but I think we're talking about being more efficient with our time. If we're expected to do more with less, we need to be picking up the projects that are more important, or at least are the ones that we need to get done.
Thank you. And then, have you considered eliminating overtime?
I believe that might have been one of the items on here. We certainly are looking at all options, that would be one of them.
I think there was mention of reducing it, but I'm wondering about completely eliminating it mandatory, to make it mandatory.
Sometimes it's hard to do when you've got callbacks. We've got callbacks from the municipal service center, they've got to be on an overtime status, so there has to be some judicious use of that. You have to really be careful when it's needed, you don't have to pay for it.
Okay, and on page seven of our staff report, we have several funds listed, and the word appears is mentioned numerous times, that the fund appears to be healthy, or, and I'm wondering, at what point do we know whether a fund is healthy or is not healthy, rather than using a vague description?
You're asking an accountant to ask, or to say when a fund is healthy, it's after we do the financial reports, and we actually know where it stands as far as revenues and expenditures. You know, I guess if we could look through a crystal ball, that might help, but at this point, we, when we're projecting in the model, these are solid assumptions, and again, it's based on the best available data, and we really truly try to be conservative in our revenue estimates, and we try to be very conservative in our expenditures. And an example is police costs. Do we truly believe five percent is going to be the standard every year? Not necessarily, but on revenues, we always try to, you know, take worst case, and if it's higher, then that's great. And so, again, when we say it appears, it's because based on all the available data and our assumptions, we feel they're solid, and those funds, based on our projections, are going to show positive results.
In your slide presentation, there's mention of the building permit revenues being down.
Correct.
And we had previously discussed in council meetings that, obviously, we are now moving toward a maintenance city.
Correct.
And in reading that revenues are down, I'm also reading that there are issues at the planning department in terms of there being a lot of traffic and being very busy, and that there is a lot of work for employees. How do we reconcile that? It seems as though when building permits are down, then why do we have issues with staffing at that level?
Well, I don't know if I'm the best one to answer this, but let me, if you go back and look at where we had the spikes, these were major developments, if you use Dos Vientos, and those permits, not to say they're cookie cutter, but they're large developments, and the amount of permits that are being issued are more streamlined, easier, the type of stuff that's coming over the counter now because it's infill is probably a lot more complex. And so, granted, the amount of permit numbers are probably down, but the complexity of those projects is probably up. So, that's the, that would be the standard response, because if you truly look at the permits process, there were some significant increases when those developments were occurring.
And through our user fees, that's one of the things we try to capture, is how much time is being spent on a project and work, and when we're charging fees, that's one of the things we try to do, is make sure we're capturing the time. So, at least we're charging for the time as much as possible.
Okay, let me see, I think there was one more, and then I should be done for now. Let me just see. If you bear with me. Okay, so on slide seventeen, the last time we had such a low in sales taxes, or in sales tax revenues, was about seven years ago?
Correct. We're returning to two thousand and three, two thousand and two.
Okay. And I was just wondering, in nineteen ninety-two, during the last very difficult economic times, how many employees did the city either, I believe there were layoffs, I'm not quite certain, but if so, how many were there?
My recollection was that we reduced about forty positions, and that they were vacant, and laying off around five.
Is it your feeling that employees would rather take furlough instead of seeing some of their colleagues being laid off?
We've been, Connie Hickman, Human Rights as a Director, and I've been meeting regularly to talk about options, and some of the things that we'll be sharing with the Finance Audit Committee, ideas that we've had to reduce costs in the payroll area.
And I'm mentioning furlough because that is one of the recommendations in the staff report, one of several drastic measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Down this end, Mr. Gillette?
You know, before he gives there, I think that fish tank thing, we could be on to something. I was just, what if we froze the salaries of the fish?
I would support that.
How much would that save?
I would support the salaries, freezing the salaries.
Or maybe an early retirement plan?
Could do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Maybe you guys can bring that up, too.
On a tiered basis?
Exactly.
I'm not sure if those are the words from a sworn union man, but, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple additional questions. In looking at your graphs on slide twenty-five and twenty-six, both general fund and general fund increasing on salary and benefits and costs, I noticed that on general fund salary and benefit costs, over a nine-year period, approximately twelve million dollar increase. Is that about right?
From two thousand, in two thousand, it was thirteen point three million, or thirteen point four.
Okay, I had it from two thousand to two thousand and nine, the current, that it was from about eighteen million to thirty-five million.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong graph, my fault. In two thousand, yes, eighteen million through two thousand and nine, at thirty-one point six million.
Okay, okay, I was just, what I was looking at, it's about a twelve million dollar increase for an employee base of six hundred-plus employees. I'm not getting it-
Not all employees are in general fund. About seventy-five percent of those six hundred employees are in the general fund. So, it's not that many employees, and during that time, we had increases in our PERS rate. Remember, we were zero in two thousand to two thousand and three or four. In two thousand and five, you start seeing a spike, because that's when we started having to pay close to ten, eleven percent for PERS on employee salary that we didn't have before. And that's included in that schedule.
Okay, well, that's a variable, then, that I can't pursue, because I was looking at the percentage, or looking at the increase, the dollar increase for an employee baseline compared to police service costs, and I can't use the two with that explanation, so I understand that. Okay, let me ask this, then. Are we, are you folks able to get any additional help or information from, we have twelve cities that are usually used for, well, for lack of a better term, benchmarking purposes for police service costs. And what I'm looking at, are our cost, police cost per capita maintaining what full-service cities were? Historically, we've been below that. Where are we in comparisons now?
And the last thing I can reference is the police survey that we did about five years ago.
Right.
Do you remember that? And when we compared ourselves to a full-service city, Leximi, for example, was costing us about six million less per year to have a contract with Ventura County versus having our own in-house police. And we did that with a couple other benchmark cities as well, and that's the most recent study we have of that. Clearly, there was a benefit to contracting with Ventura County. On the other hand, I think when we compared ourselves to Santa Clarita, we probably, Santa Clarita, for a similar-sized city, was getting it cheaper from LA County Sheriff. However, there's service level costs, and service levels there that I don't think we were comparing apples to apples to.
Okay, well, you answered my other question. It's been five years since we've done the, or approximately, done the analysis of police service costs?
Yes, two thousand and five was the audit. And with that said, as part of the final plan, we can include some of that information as far as benchmarking and updating at least the benchmarks that were done in that plan.
Okay, because I think it's such a, it's the single biggest item that we deal with, and it's one of those that we truly need to look at, and the comedy is obviously in the same financial bind that we are. And as we go through each one of these, and I'll try and speed this up, because I'm just about out of questions, but I want to make sure that those, I want to be certain in my own mind that those advantages, and there's a whole list of advantages, not just singularly the cost, but that those advantages remain constant over the years, especially in the area of per capita cost for police services. No question about the result, quality, and everything else, but it's one of those questions that has to be asked, and we need to know the answer to it. So, and as far as, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that that aquarium at the library, we just had a resident come forward and donate the money to put another educational enhancement on the aquarium to identify the species, where they come from, the world's oceans and everything else. And it's, that particular piece of that library is a clear educational component that a lot of that community simply don't have. And so, it's more than, much, much more than just an aesthetic enhancement. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? None? No. Ms. Bill de la Pena?
Thank you. It has to deal with a recommendation involving TOTV. One of the recommendations is to actually not broadcast certain programs, and perhaps just broadcast planning commission meetings and the city council hearings. What would happen to the employees if we were to do that, if nothing else would be broadcast?
Again, that was just a gap-closing strategy recommendation, in terms of how we were going to implement that or do anything, it was just an idea. So, I can't answer what the final outcome will be, or what our final recommendation will be, it's something we'd be running, again, by the committee and see what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two speaker cards on this issue. First, Joe Pagano, followed by Ron Segal. Please step up to the podium, give us your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, and to all of the council members. My name is Joe Pagano, and I reside in Thousand Oaks. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks since nineteen sixty-four. I am a financial advisor in our great city. Over the last year and a half, I've seen a number of my high-income clients terminated from their jobs or forced to take pay cuts. We've all read and seen in the news that our state's unemployment rate is at nearly ten percent, and our federal aid to our state will not close the forty-two billion dollar deficit. Our state's ten percent spending cut is not enough. California is considering a two-and-a-half percent income tax surcharge, and our sales tax will increase by three-quarters of a cent. Sacramento is also considering a higher gas tax, and as you all know, these federal and state woes are trickling down to our city. Forty percent of Thousand Oaks purchases in the last five years are worth less, so our property tax revenues will be going down. Ventura County's unemployment rate is over nine percent. I'm here tonight to ask our city council to continue taking a hard look at spending and budget reductions, and we must increase our reserves. Businesses are closing- Businesses are closing, and sales tax revenues are down. You've already done a lot to reduce expenses and postponing projects and programs. But when I learned that the city is giving Caneo Rec and Park $5 million for the Lang Ranch Park, I was really surprised. This money must be kept in reserve, especially in this financial climate we're in. Just because the money's there doesn't mean it should be spent. Our local economy will get worse before it gets better. And I'm asking that you not give the Rec and Park the $5 million. It's not to be just given away. Our park and rec can wait in this climatic situation. It's the wise thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pagano. Mr. Segal?
Thank you. My name is Ron Segal. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to reiterate what the last speaker just talked about. That's the $5 million to the Parks Department. Instead of a long speech that I had, I'll just make it very short, only to say that the park, the $5 million goes to the first phase of the park, which is basically going to Thousand Oaks Little League, to which they're going to build a baseball complex. We don't object to the park, we don't object to the baseball complex, but what we do object to is now with this economic phase that we're in, is to allocate so much money to one special use. For the rest of the community, there will be no, in the first phase, and maybe never, there'll be no park benches, there'll be no community center, there won't even be fields for soaring. So what we would like you to do is to take another look at the allocation for the parks, specifically for the Lang Ranch Park, and act in a way that gives, we, the citizens of Thousand Oaks, reassurance that these monies are going to be allocated in a judicious way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this has been an outstanding discussion tonight, and it illustrates the value of having the financial strategic plan and looking out 10 years. As the staff said at the beginning, we started doing this in 2005, and it served as a very healthy and helpful process then, and it kept the city from going down the path of enhanced retirement packages, which many cities did and are today regretting it. And it also caused the council to pause and not add new programs or services over the years, which has been very helpful. And we are in a very good position relative to most other cities in the state, if not the nation, and we do have decent reserves at this point. So the value of the model's been very good. But a couple of things that I know that, just for sort of clarification purposes to be helpful here, the salary and benefit slide and the police cost slides, we were, a little bit of apples and oranges in these slides because the costs up through this current fiscal year, they're actual expenditures, the costs that actually happen, and then going forward, we're showing estimated budgeted dollars. So if we were to show historical budgeted dollars, which have always been higher than the actual expenditures, that figure would be lower. But it illustrates the value of the tool, so you can see what will happen, and it reflects the, sort of the recurring impact of sort of previous decisions that have been made and what's going on with the PERS rates. And on the police side, it illustrates quite dramatically the impact of the several positions that were added in the late '90s and early 2000 timeframe, and now the recurring cost of doing that is catching up to us, and the retirement costs for the county have gone up quite a bit. So that's the value in this exercise. It shows us the recurring impacts over time, and it is merely a projection, so we need to, and going forward at the staff level, we'll make sure we're pointing out that part of this slide is actual, the other part shows the full cost. And typically, what we budget is not what we spend. We're always short. So, and there was a slide in here that showed the increasing gap between how much we spend and how much we take in. Historically, we're a few percentage points below what we budget, so we come in lower, we always have year-end savings. And on the revenue side, we typically get more than we estimate, because this staff, over here, your finance staff, does a very good job there. We always struggle between the finance department, I can't look at Candy anymore because you're in the city manager's office, but John Shoppe, we always struggle with because they want to ratchet down the revenue estimates, and we want to make them a little bit higher. So it's a very conservative way we do budgeting, and it's been very healthy over the years. And the library department, good discussion on that, and that illustrates, and we did point out to staff that with a 22,000 square foot addition a few years, we would run into challenges in the future, and the future is here, and we are working on that. The frozen positions, good, very good discussion on that, and with respect to the unions and the employees, who watch this stuff very carefully, any changes in staffing, that type of thing, would be subject to meet and confer, so we want to respect that process and work with the unions as we go through that. But we, we're not at that point yet, but we may get to that point. The gap-closing strategies that staff put in the appendix, those are recommendations for you to contemplate, or not recommendations, those are strategies for you to contemplate, and the council's finance committee will work their way through that. So I want to make it clear for everybody that that's not actually staff recommendations. Those are just a range of options available to the council to consider. And the Lang Ranch Community Park, we heard some comments on, that, the funding for that came out of a separate capital improvement project fund. It's not, that money doesn't compete for recurring operations such as salary and benefits, so we do have funds set aside just for capital projects, and those are one-time hits. So great job to Candy Hong and John Adams and their staff. They worked incredible hours to get to this point, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Mr. Fox?
Okay, yeah, first, it's just, you know, I think council commented, but just want to compliment staff on a very thorough and comprehensive report and your responses back to the council. I'm going to move the items one through four, and then also incorporate the comments by council relative to what we'd like to see come back in terms of additional information.
Mrs. Earl?
I would also like to compliment the staff on this, and I'm sure you noticed that Mr. Glancy and I did not have too many words about it. We did go over, as the finance committee, we did spend a number of hours with finance staff already.
Mr. Gillette?
I would just like to also thank the staff, all of the staff, not just the presenters tonight, but the entire executive staff and the rank-and-file employees of the city. It would have been very easy when this started, however long, last summer, last spring, a year ago, what have you, to simply slam the door and put out of business on the outside of the door. Everything that's coming forward is coming forward very carefully, very specific, and very deliberate. We're a multimillion-dollar municipal corporation engaged in the business of delivering services to the 127,000 residents of this city, and everything we do has to be very carefully measured. And I feel, I feel very strongly that we are on the correct path, and a great deal of gratitude to the experts that are working on and helping us as we, as we make our deliberations and develop the policy to see us through this. Knowing all the time that the 800-pound gorilla is sitting in Sacramento, and where that next shoe drops, the brief discussion on EREF, our discussion on Item 7I tonight, the educational revenue, it used to be educational relief, you can call it whatever you want to, but what it is, is that the state is mandated to fund public education. So they appropriate the money, they put it in the budget, then they take the money out to pay for something else, and they come back and they take money from the cities under the Educational Relief Augmentation Fund. And if anybody speaks against it, then they're accused of being against funding education. It's a no-win game for the 700 and some municipalities of this state, so we have to watch all of it very, very carefully, and so much of it, we have very little control over. But thank you for all of the things you've done, staff. Thank you.
Ms. Bill DiLapena?
Thank you. I will support the motion, and I did not mention before when I spoke about possibly freezing salaries, that if, if that recommendation should come to fruition, as it is in the staff report tonight, to, not necessarily to freeze, but other staff-related issues, that the council look at not giving itself a raise. Obviously, I think that we have to start first before we expect the employees not to expect a pay raise. Then, the issue of travel was also in the staff report, and I think that the travel should also apply to council, not only to staff, to see if we can reduce the cost there as well. For example, sending one or two representatives across the country for representation of the city of Thousand Oaks should suffice. And then also, we received a letter today regarding the day labor site. Perhaps that should be taken into consideration as well. And regarding Lang Ranch Park being part of capital project fund, that is part of this whole staff discussion, and perhaps that could be revisited too. And those are my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I think we all need to remember that when we talk about freezing positions, we talk about a reduced number of people doing no less work than what the greater number did before, and it's a testimony to the quality of the employees that we have here, that they do step up and they do the work that's required. Now, if you exceed that, a very fine balanced line, then you begin to decrease services to our residents, and Thousand Oaks is known as a city that really provides the services to the residents. So I think we need to talk about some of these ideas, perhaps with a little more of a, an eye on the whole rather than something focused. I think it's a great motion. It's a great report. I thank you very much for your efforts and the quality of the work product. So make her the motion final comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers, you're a...
Chuck, go ahead. I've done this twice in the 10 years I've been here, so please forgive me there. But, "Good evening, Mayor and City Council." My name's Chuck Rogers. I'm the superintendent of the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant, and I'm here today to follow up on something you asked us to do, which was to look at the Triumph Sanitation District. In October 14th, 2008, you directed us to review the service options, existing service efficiency, and reclaimed water opportunities in the Triumph District. The first thing we did, and this was Jay Spurgeon and I, and Jay was also very helpful in preparation to this report, was to meet with representatives of the Triumph Sanitation District, the Las Vergenes Municipal Water District, the Cagus Municipal Water District, and La Pcau. And that's what I can show you a picture of here, and you kind of get the idea of, you know, where the Triumph Sanitation District service area is in Thousand Oaks. Part of North Ranch, part of West Lake Village there. There's a natural, obviously geographical split, and what I like to say in the wastewater business is, gravity is good. And so, right there, so there's about 6,000 ERUs, equivalent residential units, you can think of those simply as homes, some businesses, obviously, in the West Lake Village area there, that are served by the Triumph Sanitation District. That's just another picture. I believe that's the service area for the water companies, which we stuck that in there because it's germane to issues regarding reclaimed water usage that we'll talk about a little bit further. The background of Triumph Sanitation District is formed in 1963, and it parallels the history of the city of Thousand Oaks as well. And it was formed to provide wastewater service to southeastern Ventura County. The natural topography of that flows to the Malibu Creek, and it sometimes isn't very obvious, even to those who have been, you know, looking at it for 20 years, but it's very clear what areas of Thousand Oaks flow. Naturally, the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant, and which areas flow then to the Malibu Creek. Covers about 50 square miles, 10,500 services, population of about 30,000 people. We're about 45% of the connections in the Triumph Sanitation District. The board of directors are made up of two residents elected at large, a Ventura County supervisor, a 1,000 Oaks City Council member, in this case, Mayor Glancy, and one VRSD director, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District Director Gillette. The background, it's an interesting history, of course. Las Vergenes was formed in 1957, initially to provide imported state water to western Los Angeles County. In 1964, they formed the joint venture, I believe Hill Canyon basically got it starting in 1965, so you can see how these things are occurring fairly simultaneously. Triumph owns 30% of the trunk sewers, the Las Vergenes Municipal District Wastewater Treatment Plant, and also 30% of the reclaimed water system. TST owns and maintains its own wastewater collection system within the boundary, including Thousand Oaks. TST contracts with Las Vergenes then for those wastewater services. One interesting fact about Las Vergenes, they were truly one of the pioneers in reclaimed water usage in the United States, and that started in 1972. To an extent, water's always reclaimed out of wastewater treatment plants of one form or another, but they were really one of the pioneers of that and nationally known for it. Probably the number-one issue in all this is, you know, the monthly sewer service charges. And if you look there, you know, go right to the bottom line, get a couple other columns off to the side, but the second column there is, you know, what does the city of Thousand Oaks pay versus what does Las Vergenes pay? And in some ways, you look at wastewater treatment plants and you attempt to benchmark them, and you look and go, well, okay, well, here we are, fairly similar-sized plants. We both do nitification, denitification, we both have very similar requirements, and yet here we are in the city of Thousand Oaks, we're paying 25, 45 a month, and I don't anticipate that changing for some time, and the Las Vergenes Municipal Water District pays 45. You know, why is that? And we took a look at that, and we wanted to take a fair look at it, and I think we always have to take into account, you know, what was the history of the development of these facilities? And they were different. Las Vergenes was, you know, you have to look at topography, you have to look at permit requirements, historical decisions, and environmental priorities. And one of the things that we look at, Las Vergenes, the decision they made back in the '90s was to go full-scale composting at their facility, and so they built the Rancho Composting Facility, and with the idea that they were going to turn their biosolids into a product which they could eventually market, what they essentially do now, they create the Class A compost, and then they provide it to the citizens of their community. You know, we take a completely different look at that. We take a look at, we want to recycle our biosolids as well, but we found a more economical way of doing that. Neither way is necessarily the best way. They're decisions made by well-intentioned individuals, but these are the kind of decisions that end up as a service charge. Another thing, and really a great compliment to the city council in the last 10 years, she made a lot of decisions which have made certainly my life easier at Hill Canyon, but also ones that I think are sustainable. You know, the projects that we're doing, whether it's the wetlands or the renewable energy things, are things that keep costs down, and are both good for the environment. So that's kind of marking our definition of sustainable projects, is, you know, do they make money? Not necessarily do they make money, but are they economical, and are they something that we continue to do for a long time? Basically, I got around to three sewer service options, and I'll go through them fairly quickly here. The first was, things that we could do, and these are, we weren't the first ones to think of this. As a matter of fact, a lot of the staff work had been done by TST some time ago, as they were looking at some of their options, was, you know, what if we were, what if we had a situation where we withdrew all of the city connections from Triumph, assumed responsibility for the collection system, intercept the flow and convey it to Hill Canyon? The second potential option that we came up with is, what if we just withdrew from TST, from the city, the city doing that, and assume responsibility for the collection system, and continue to contract with Las Vergenes for treatment services? And the third option was to just continue doing what we're doing today. The TST service option, number one, you know, the withdraw from TST, took a look at this, and we'd have to assume responsibility for the collection system, intercept flow and convey it to Hill Canyon. You know, you can do anything with engineering. We could do this, and we could spend millions and millions of dollars to do it, and in the end, it's not going to make a lot of sense. But, you know, it's complicated to do this, it's super expensive, you know, you've seen in the staff report the various negatives that go with that, and I'd be happy to cover it further, but let's just go on to option two. And there was a nice little picture we put in there of how you... And there was a nice little picture we put in there of how you could do all that fine stuff. I wouldn't do it. The service option number two, you know, withdraw from TSD, assume responsibility for the collection system, and again, contract with Las Vergenes for treatment. City in this scenario would provide the same services TSD, minimal cost savings as far as we could see from the city taking on the collection system. I went through the slide earlier, went a little bit too quick there, but our costs and TSDs are about the same for wastewater collection system type work. It's pretty straightforward. You know, we do a good job of maintaining our assets, I think they do as well. So there wasn't any great savings that we could see there. And there's unknown cost savings, if they do exist, with the city renegotiating the contract with Las Vergenes and doing that. Either one of options one or two is going to involve us getting involved with LAFCO. And that LAFCO process is outlined in a fairly minimal fashion for you, but a lot of things going on there. Election of, we'd have to have election of affected area voters, you know, a Prop 218 ballot if the rates increase, even for those people that would be left behind, say the county, you know, going off on their own as well. And a lot of, obviously, dispensation of TSD issues there. They have a lot of contracts, they're hooked in financially for 40-some years of activity, and, you know, I put it down in my notes where it would be a messy business with unknown costs associated with it. The third service option is to continue TSD services to Thousand Oaks, no change there. TSD providing, you know, provides efficient service to the Thousand Oaks residents. And that is our recommended option tonight. In summary, option one, high cost, unknown, doesn't make a lot of sense. Option two, you know, as far as we see minimal cost savings involved with that. Three, continuing on the same situation we've had for, you know, a number of years, seems to be a good idea. But one of the things that Jay and I saw, and as we got to talking with the Las Vergenes people, that we left with a sense that additional reclaimed water projects within Thousand Oaks ought to be pursued. I just put down some statistics. If you think about that area, they produce about 1.5 million gallons a day of wastewater. And right now, about 30% of that comes back to Thousand Oaks in the form of irrigation that takes place at the North Ranch Country Club. You know, 100% of Hill Canyon effluent is reclaimed. And here's a great statistic, I put all this together, but, and by that, I mean, you know, we're able to sell, we have an ideal situation. We put it in the creek, somebody picks it up downstream and writes a million-dollar check every year for us. If it goes beyond that point, and it continues to provide habitat preservation along the creek system, or goes out into the Magoo Lagoon, so we really have no downsides of what we're doing. But Las Vergenes is faced with kind of an unusual situation in that their normal place of discharge, basically, they're facing, you know, a lot of environmental issues with that. They want them to get out of the Malibu Creek. And they do have an alternative discharge point at, in the Los Angeles River, but it's expensive to get that water pumped over there. So they're looking hard at finding reclaimed water projects to take care of that extra flow for those months of the year that currently they're discharging in the Malibu Creek. And I think there is kind of the peril that lies for us, is that if they aren't able to find that, and if they have to go build huge facilities to store this water, that's going to cost money, and that's going to come back to the ratepayers, there's no question about it. Right now, the reclaimed water system that they have, and it's an extensive one, and they've done a fabulous job with it, it doesn't cost the ratepayers any money, it's basically self-sustaining. So we've taken a look, you know, we see projects in the City of Thousand Oaks, potentially at Lang Ranch Park, there are other ones around that have been kicked around for years, Westlake High School facility, I believe it's Blue Cross, it used to be One GTE Place, it's gone through a different name, but there are other areas there that are fairly close to the end of our reclaimed water lines. And our staff recommendation is, again, to continue on with that, and also direct staff to pursue those additional reclaimed water opportunities within the city. And we think that we can, as the Public Works Department, provide additional assistance to the TSD staff, you know, to find those and help any way they can, and work, sometimes too, with the water purveyors, you know, to find a place for this reclaimed water. I think, long-term, we appear to be entering an extended drought. It is, I believe, in our best interest to find a home for that water in Thousand Oaks. Thank you. Any questions?
Chuck, thanks a lot for a great report.
Oh, thank you.
Questions? Mr. Gillette.
Thank you very much. This is particularly significant at this time, since last night, the Board of the Triumpho Sanitation District voted to change its government structure. And it will be moving towards a 2010 change to fit the election windows and minimize If the decision is made that the governance structure, the purpose is to get directly elected representation as opposed to the current system, the five board members, as you described where they come from. If the decision is made to go to districts, that would enable, since residents of the City of Thousand Oaks comprise about 44% of the connections for Triumpho, they certainly would carve out a portion and have direct representation. But if they, if the decision is to go at large seats, conceivably, all five board members could be elected out of Oak Park. And we would have that many Thousand Oaks residents being represented in this critical service by residents outside of the city and outside of the zone. And I, to me, it's significant, it may not be. Colleagues on the council may think that's not a big deal, and that's something we'll have to deal with two years from now. The reclaimed water issue, you're absolutely right. There's currently a seven-month creek avoidance probation in place that requires seven months out of the year that Tapia cannot discharge into Malibu Creek. The Regional Water Quality Control Board has on a number of occasions, and it appears to be a goal, to get Tapia, get the discharge 12 months out of the creek, which will look for all discharge. The Los Angeles River now seems to be the alternative de jour, but we have, the Triumpho Board has talked on a number of occasions about the possibility of running a reclaimed water line back into Thousand Oaks. And either Westlake Boulevard or Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the 23 Freeway, which would provide sufficient reclaimed water to water the new landscaping and the existing landscape on the 23 Freeway, down to Olson Road, Sunset Hills Golf Course, Cal Lutheran University, areas within that whole zone that require a tremendous amount of water. And perhaps at that point, reclaimed water becomes an actual commodity instead of a byproduct. Historically, the city and the city's managers in charge of those issues have been somewhat reluctant to embrace the concept of incurring the expense of bringing that reclaimed water in. And I don't want to sound negative, it's just, with the number of priorities that there are, it hasn't been high on the priority list. But as we get closer and closer into more of a drought area, and there is need for water in these areas, this is a potential source. So the cooperative opportunities of the city working with Triumpho and its operating partners, and eventually Las Vergenes through the joint venture, it appears that there may be some possibilities there, but we'll have to wait and see. The main concern at this point is the potential for significantly increased costs in the delivery of services from the Tapia reception point, the entire collection system, and how those costs are divided up through the joint venture, and specifically into Ventura County, and the communities that it's served, and what role the governance structure will play in that. That's an awful lot of our residents that are, that will be impacted in one way or another, as yet unknown. So, thank you for the report. I appreciate all the work that went into it, and we, it's something that'll stand there, and we now have it. We don't have to speculate on some of the questions.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Bill Duvall, opinion?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Rogers. Last time I saw you, you're here was a little longer.
I was a little younger then, too.
Thank you very much for such a straightforward report. You seem to be a straight shooter, and I really appreciate that. Now, regarding recommendation number two, what would be the chances that the Las Vergenes District would even accept any proposal that the City of Thousand Oaks might make?
I would typify our relationship as very strong between the City of Thousand Oaks and all of these people involved. I think the city is very well-respected, the staff's respected, the leadership of TSD's been respected. I don't think they're particularly the issue. I think going through the whole LAFCO process and everything like that would be more of an issue. But in our talking to them, there wasn't any sense of, geez, we'll never do that, or that could never happen. You know, I think what they simply want is whoever they partner with is that they understand the issues that are involved. And their issues, quite frankly, are a little more complex than ours are. You know, we're blessed with some pretty simple, straightforward challenges in the rest of the City of Hill Canyon treating water. Theirs are far more complex.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Ms. Rogers, again, thank you for a great report. I am just very appreciative of the job you do down the hill. And as I've told you before, and others, no matter when we go to meetings, Hill Canyon comes up, and it's almost like it's got a halo around it. People are so interested in what you've done and how they can do it. But anyway, great report. We have one speaker on the issue, Jana Orkney, who is the Chair of TSD right now. Ms. Orkney, stand up, please, and give us your name and city of residence.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Glancy and City Council members. I'm Jana Orkney, I live in Oak Park, and I am Chair of Triumpho Sanitation District. And first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your kind words about Triumpho. We pride ourselves on offering good service to our ratepayers at a good cost. I do have some comments on the report, however. And one thing is that the Joint Powers Authority, the partnership that we have with Las Vergenes, has not really gone into that much. You're talking about negotiating with Las Vergenes, for instance. Well, it wouldn't be negotiating with Las Vergenes for recycled water, or for, if you used option two, for sewer treatment, you would be negotiating with the Joint Powers, and that would be Triumpho and Las Vergenes. So like with option two, it would be like, you would be doing the collection, you would take the collection pipes from Triumpho, and then you would go and negotiate with Triumpho and Las Vergenes for the treatment. So that doesn't make a lot of sense. So the third item, I'm glad that that was what you recommended, that we continue having, continue with Triumpho whole as it is, and looking for recycled water, some additional recycled water from us. Now, one thing, however, infrastructure for recycled water is free, and I think that is the part of why our sewer rates are higher. Also, of course, the making of the compost, which has to do with us being out of the creek for seven months. Excuse me, getting a little dry throat. So if we're looking at building more infrastructure, that is definitely a cost. And I would ask you, with your use of recycled water, why you don't use any of it for irrigation within the city? Is it because of the infrastructure costs that you would have to build to deliver that? It seems like you have a resource there that is going elsewhere. And as we're in this drought, potable water is becoming increasingly like gold, which is raising the value, of course, of recycled water, which is a real asset and becoming quite a commodity, as I think was mentioned. So I think we're going to have increasing demand for recycled water from all sides, and we really have to look at how to make best use of it, not only the JPA, Las Vergenes and Triumpho, but also the city and how you treat your recycled water. So I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. And also, I have great confidence in the residents of Thousand Oaks that people will step forward to run for seats on the Board. I don't see that it's going to be all five Oak Park people. I hope there's a great mixture of folks on the Board coming up. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Orkney. Mr. Rogers would like to comment to a question, I believe, that was posed.
I'm not sure it was in the form of a question, I didn't... Let me comment real quick, if I could, just in regards to reclaimed water. We do sell 100% of our reclaimed water, we sell it to the Camarosa Waters District downstream. From the water perspective, we are very much a part of a regional program through the Cagis Municipal Water District, and we look at it that way. So any water that gets reused within Cagis is that much water that we don't have to import from the state. And so it's a benefit to all of us within the Cagis Municipal Water District. And so Cagis, actually, it's a three-party deal with us, Cagis and Camarosa. So we do recycle 100% of our water. We also get credit in the Upper Los Poses Basin for all that, since we're not having to pump, the farmers aren't having to pump, we actually get credit. So there's water in the upper north Los Poses Basin with kind of the city's name on it. And that becomes important to us as we go forward, looking at these reduced water deliveries and those types of things. Now, the city's never made claim to that water before, but that's what our agreement says, we've talked with Cagis before. You know, how that water's accessed, or what sort of water wheeling would take place, has yet to be determined. But, so not only do we recycle our water, but we actually get credit for the potable water that's saved, too. So that's a very good thing for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Motion? Is there one? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'll move that we receive and file. Option, it's option three. The staff, I'll move the staff recommendation, continue wastewater service for Thousand Oaks by TSD, option number three, no change, and direct staff to pursue additional reclaimed water opportunities within the city.
Thank you. Comments? Please vote.
The vote is four one. Councilmember Gillette dissenting. Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I make one last comment? Since it's only the second time we've been here in 10 years, and I don't get to talk to you all at once, I just wanted to say thank you. This is a wonderful city to work for. You know, it's just great going to work at Hill Canyon every day. It is truly a premier place, but it's premier people I work with, and especially Council, Scott, Mark Watkins, how does it get any better than that? But anyway, thank you so much.
It's our pleasure, and thank you both for your efforts. Far too happy. Okay, there are no redevelopment agency reports, there's no committee, commission board reports. I'll take the first follow-up reports on meetings attended. These are meetings attended, and I will make a comment here about meetings attended that are not in Thousand Oaks proper. Most of these meetings are attended with the interest of gaining for the city, bringing back funds and consideration for our projects, and these are not junkets at all. There are some that find the better way to serve by not moving from town, but procuring funds, particularly in this climate, is extremely important. It's not going to just come to us in the mail, we got to go out looking for it. So this is one of those trips where we go up and we do some fund begging, and also attend some policy committee meetings. I attended the Community Services Policy Committee, and I will say that the first meetings of the year are typically going over how the committee functions, what the policies are, principles that are used, the work program as was established in 2008, and then subsequently for 2009. And it was just a very grim session, talking about the budget, and of course, legislation. And as we all know, there'll be very little legislation proposed that doesn't directly affect budgeting. And so this is going to be kind of a lean year in terms of legislation, and apparently it's going to be a lean year in terms of budget. it's going to be a lean year in terms of budgets. But that was the Community Services Policy Committee. Second policy committee was Transportation, Communication, and Public Works. And again, it started out with pretty much the same thing, going over the policies that are particular to that committee, as opposed to Community Services or one of the other committees. I will say, overall, that the mood of the attendees was fairly moderate hostility toward the people who work up there in Sacramento in the legislature. A great deal of distrust and disgust for their lack of performance and inability to carry through on their jobs. And two of the, well, I think it was just, it was widespread disgust. But the policy committees are always extremely beneficial, and that was it. Mr. Gillette, you have a report?
You can come back to me, Mr. Mayor. I'm still hunting through the supplemental for my reports, it's not in the agenda, so I'm going through here for you.
Right. Now to you others. Mr. Fox, you're ready?
Yeah, in the green is the committee report from the Employee Relations Committee, and included in that is the work plan for 2009, and the league's strategy and goals for that year.
You got it? Okay. Very good. Recommendation? Receive? Thanks. Ms. Irwin, or Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am currently the vice-chair of the League of California Cities Public Safety Committee, and in that capacity, I attended the January 21 Public Safety Committee meeting in Sacramento. You know, for those of us that do participate in the League of California Cities, and the National League of Cities, and these different organizations, I don't think we have ever thought that our role and responsibility with the city council is to just show up on Tuesday night, every other Tuesday night, for a council meeting. Working within the organizational structure of these state and national groups, I think over the history of the city has proven to be extremely beneficial to the city, and it's one of the reasons why we continue to do it. With that thought in mind, the report is contained in the supplemental packet with the specifics of the meeting. If I'm prepared to answer, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
There being none, the motion is to receive and file.
Thank you. Ms. Irwin?
I am now on the Policy Committee for Housing, Community, and Economic Development, and I think the interesting thing about this meeting is we were able to listen to the Minority Assembly Member and Tony Mendoza about the budget situation, and we were able to encourage all of them to hurry and work out their differences, because they were definitely starting to affect all of us sitting there. So it was very advantageous to have them there in the room with us. And with that, I would like to move that we receive the report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mitnick, city manager, follow-ups, et cetera?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by the way, a follow-up from requests from the public. Just to reiterate, that staff will work very cooperatively with the folks from the Soaring Society and the other governmental, local governmental agencies, and we'll stay on top of it, and we'll be providing follow-up to council. With respect to the state budget situation, you did hear a little bit about that tonight in the comprehensive financial strategic plan that was presented, and you heard some comments from the council members who were up in Sacramento over this last week. The governor did give a State of the State speech 10 or 12 days ago, and there weren't many details about the state budget, and since that time, there's been literally no progress. We did have, our League of California Cities representative for the Channel Islands, or Channel Counties Cities, Dave Molinex, came out and spent an hour with the executive team this morning to give us an update on the budget, and then we had a lunch meeting with Dave, the mayor, and myself. And it continues to be disheartening what's happening up there, but the big five, the governor and the two majority leaders and minority leaders in both houses continue to meet, but there's been no progress made to date, and still we're trying to figure out and trying to make sense of all this. Basically, what we can tell you is, we hope to get to February 1st, and then after that, we'll hear something from Sacramento. February 1st becomes significant, because that's when the state comptroller will likely issue IOUs to businesses, to colleges, people getting grants, and for income tax filers. Those who are going to file for a refund may be surprised to learn that they will not get checks, rather they'll get IOUs, that's a potential outcome. The California Transportation Commission has announced that it's going to delay a number of transportation infrastructure projects throughout the state. The University of California has announced that it'll likely cut freshman enrollment, slashing a few thousand spots in the university system. The governor's ordered state employees to take unpaid furlough days a couple each month, possible layoffs, and so on. And the LA legislative analyst is looking at some significant hits. So we'll continue to monitor this. It is tied to the financial strategic plan, which you heard earlier. We are seeing service level impacts here in Thousand Oaks, and once these state hits come down to us, we'll likely see even more significant service level impacts. That's it, by the way, of that update. Oh, and as far as upcoming council meetings, the next meeting will be on February 10th. There'll be some public hearings dealing with affordable housing projects and an update to the housing element. The next meeting after that will be on February 24th, and that's when council will have its annual goal-setting workshop. And that's it for city manager update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. There is no closed session tonight, and so therefore, time for adjournment, and we will adjourn to our regular meeting, February 10th, 2009.